People speak and I get up at four o'clock. That we speak can solely reference to the application of the land use. And that is the character, we're well aware of that, so just like keep saying. And we're going to ask you to limit your comments to five minutes. And then again, only address the board and when you're done, if you believe you let somebody else come in. And again, just in, uh, Jesse, um, that said Jesse, you want to speak? And we'll start.
Can someone confirm that as soon as we're done?
I'm, uh, I just admitted four people into it. You want to try again? Sorry about it. Yeah. My apologies.
First time, Donny Brooks, who's in public with a mask on. I'm Jesse, it's my wife, Jolene. We appreciate all of you coming. I was told that I am to address the board, so I feel disrespectful turning my back on you guys, but I'm going to follow the rules. I thank you guys. Just going through this, I realize that you guys are in a tough situation. You have to see everyone in this room. And there will be people that are upset, no matter what your decision is. I want you to know on behalf of my wife and I and our friends, we will never be set upset with you outside of this. Do your job, read the law and interpret it the best you can, and there will be no hard feelings on our part, no matter what. And I, we appreciate your service. I've been stuck in that situation before. You have to decide and the law is the place to be and somebody has to do it. Thanks for doing it. I ask that anyone that is here in support of my wife and I kind of follow Rob's rules. Speak to the board. Don't bother getting into any debates. You represent Jolene and I being here and we appreciate it and I want you to act classy and be respectful of the way we always are. Somebody says something to you, don't worry about it. Just address the board and I know you guys will and I'm really honored with how many people showed up on our behalf. I wanted to mention that the special use permit, I think there's been a big complex as to what a special use permit pavilion is. It is good for one year, correct? And it always has to be renewed and looked over every year. So nothing is very private and nothing is forever. And nothing is going to ruin everything. Anything we do, we will be held accountable for and reviewed every year. Nothing is forever. It's a special use permit for one year. And I asked the board that all questions, both for and against the special use permit, like you said, should be applicable and actually in the ordinance 612. I ask that you enforce this. It is the law and no speculation, no stewing things. It has to be talked about. It has to be in, if it's talked about, it has to be in the special use permit. I start this with the application that you received from the Genesee County Planning Board. And I want to remind you, those people don't know me, it's my knowledge. They don't know the people against me. They strictly go by the law and go by the ordinance set in place for the county and this town. They read it, they approved it. My face is already sweating. The, oh yeah, I can think this out. You guys can hear me right? Oh, that's way better. The planning board, am I too loud?
You're good.
You guys can all hear me. The planning board's decision was approval with modifications. The explanation, I'll read that real quick. Given that the property is identified as having New York State D C regulated wetlands as well as potential federally regulated wetlands, the required modification is that prior to final town approval, the applicant provide written documentation from the New York D C project, from the New York D C that the project will not be encroaching on these wetlands. You guys have received that letter, correct? In addition, the applicant shall provide documentation and or permit from the U S Army Corps of Engineers for potential federal wetlands. You've also received an email from them. We are COVID dependent. Then they write, with this required modification, the two that I spoke of, the proposed ATV track should pose no significant countywide or intercommunity impact. It is recommended, and then they go on to say that we should set up a nine one one call or anything. So that is from the Genesee County Planning Board. So Jolene and I would like to apply for a special use permit for an ATV slash motor cross track, motor course track, section six twelve, page fifty-nine of your town ordinances. I'm just going to read off the ordinances. If you have any questions, I guess, ask me any questions or you can wait till the end. A, B, and C, establishment definitions, locations, requirements. The boundary of our event and course will be well outside of the two hundred foot from the highway and a thousand foot from a dwelling location requirements. I provided you with a map with that. D, minimum lot area for this permit is five acres. That's what you guys have to have to have something like this. We own a hundred and ten acres and will be using around ten acres of our hundred and ten to host this event. We would like to host three events in the 2020 season, obviously COVID dependent. That equates to us using less than 10% of our property for less than 1% of the year. I feel bad I'm not looking at any of you as I'm speaking. It's odd to have this spaced out. E, operation of, this is your ordinance, operation of a racetrack or course, sound. There is no sound despicable rating in this town. There is nothing to go by. Therefore, I purchased a sound despicable measuring device and measured existing sounds that already are allowed and accepted in this area and on this specific premises. Snowmobiles, motorcycles, dump truck and a minivan. I had four people with four four wheelers and two chainsaws run wide open at the distance that is less than what the ordinance calls for in a wide open with no foliage and no buffers. I then compared the decimal measurements to decimal measurements allowed with, of allowed vehicles and our machines fell well below already existing noise levels. Our high was forty-eight and the existing noise levels were seventy-one. A minivan passing by. Yesterday, one neighbor was running a chainsaw. Another guy, neighbor was running a lawn mower. Every day in that block, people are doing things. It's fine. It's a community. This is not new, hearing new noises, especially on Route nineteen. I stapled that one, but loudspeakers is also in E. Loudspeakers are said to not carry more than twenty-five hundred feet from the perimeter of a track in all directions. We don't have any loudspeakers. I don't think we will have any loudspeakers. However, if we do, we will stay within these guidelines and also do a trial run before any event surrounding and the surrounding neighbor and find an acceptable level. Common courtesy goes a long ways. We have it. We get it. Air quality, respect for surroundings and all neighbors. Again, this is your ordinance. Our course or track or mud butt will be in the center of our property as far from any neighbor as possible as to respect their privacy and their quality of life. Nothing we do or build will lessen the existing value of their properties. Any debris on the road at entrances or exits will be cleaned quickly and efficiently. I know we can do as good or better than any local agriculture business does in this manner. I know this because I grew up working on every local farm here. Neighbors will not incur any disturbance more than a disturbance of what any agriculture activity would create. No disturbances more than any, an average daily traffic creates. No disturbances more than the existing snowmobile trail on Perry Road creates, which, that of which these neighbors use. As an example of this understanding, I would refer to the fact that Jolene and I have a neighborhood shop party at our home, two blocks away from this property and had this event for fifteen years. We have, we now host over twenty-five hundred people a year on a humble five acres. We have never had any issues or tickets from the police, EMS, D C, health department, highway department, town, county, state, et cetera, et cetera. Not one infraction ever. Fifteen years, all bordering and most surrounding neighbors join us. I have never, nor have my guests ever damaged, pestered or harmed any neighbor or neighbor's property in the fifteen years of existence while hosting tens of thousands of people over that timeframe. I believe this track record shows that we obviously understand decency and common sense, common courtesy, and we will go above and beyond to be a respectful and polite neighbor and host a fun community event while also staying within the parameters of pavilion's ordinances and special use permit guidelines. Another thing I want to say is, you guys, we don't really have any event ordinance. Therefore, we had to dive into, on Rob's advice and on my lawyer's advice, this permit. We don't really want to have a track. We want to have an event. We don't have one. So we are actually abiding by a tremendous amount of rules that technically don't even really have anything to do with us. It's fine. We're doing it. F, Jolene and I wanted to attend a few other events and nail down the timeframe. But when this, when we really started to nail this down, the COVID hit and we haven't been able to obviously attend any. So we just said that we will be within the parameters of the town hours of operation ordinance. Which your ordinance is Monday through Thursday, nine AM to nine PM. We are not doing anything Monday through Thursday. Friday through Saturday, we're not doing anything on Fridays. Saturday, we would like to probably host, that will be the day we host an event. Your parameters call for nine AM to eleven PM. We are actually shooting for opening the gate, letting people come in at ten, which is an hour past your guideline. We would like to operate probably from actually let people have fun and start to enjoy whatever activity we're doing from probably noon to five. So that is, we would be shutting down six hours before your ordinance, even though, and we're not doing anything on Sunday. Our hours of operation will be well within your guidelines. As this is our first year, there is a learning curve, so we cannot, this is what I wrote before this, we cannot give an exact time. I'm giving you that time. That's our ballpark time. I got things to do in life. I am not going to be out there till, I don't even want to be out there till dark. G, no vehicle will be in constant operation without a muffler. H, duration of permit, we already went over this. Jolene and I understand the special use permit is valid for one year from the time of issuance and we will always go above and beyond to abide by all ordinance guidelines and planning board advice. Site and data, data plan, I did give you a site and data plan. It doesn't, I don't really think it applies to us, but we did it anyways. Attached is our site plan accompanied by satellite photo for reference, sound despicable map and legend. You guys have had this for months, correct? Am I going too fast? I feel like there's too many people here. I want to get through this. I have spoken with papers, the D C, Jessica's Ramsay, Genesee County Health Department, even though that has nothing to do with the permit during Murdock, that has nothing to do with the fire department, EMS, et cetera. Area variances, we are not asking for any variances. We are well within your ordinances on everything. And if we're not, I am more than open to hearing what we're not. We don't have, the only modifications were what, the wetlands, we've already given you the D C and the Army Corps. Waiver of requirements, we're not asking for any waiver of requirements. We feel free that we have provided you with all the necessary standards and conditions outlined in the Pavilion Town Ordinance Special Use Permit for session six twelve, all train, motor vehicle, wreck, park. I wanted to touch base on the standards applicable for all special use permits. Jolene and I have read the standards applicable for all special use permits and also feels that we fell easily within these guidelines. A, nothing we will do permanently be seen from adjacent property or road. Nothing we will do will cause pollution of any sort, dust, noise, traffic that isn't already present in the accepted area. We take pride in our investment and we will surely make this property look and function better than it advertised. If you, if you have driven by there, Jolene and I have scrapped over a hundred thousand pounds, fifty ton of crap, of scrap has been cleaned up from there. We have recycled over three hundred tires. I can't tell you how many bags of garbage and nonsense that we have picked up from there. Admittedly, there's probably another ten ton of stuff. We have, I grew up working for local firms. I love them and respect them. I can tell you, they would not have taken care of, I grew up digging holes and burying stuff. I, I didn't do that. I did a damn good job. We worked our asses off cleaning that place up and we're very proud of it. It looks good. Our event will be hosted a quarter mile from the nearest house. I have leased the farm ground to a local organic farmer, Brent Tillotin, with the understanding that if at all possible, which is, the corn is desired crop to be planted, so if it can act, so it can act as a buffer. Pair this with the numerous thirty foot wide hedgerows on this huge track of property and huge mature woods between the event and location in all houses and you have the best natural buffers possible. Your ordinance doesn't call for any buffers like that. There are none in there. We have cornfields, thick hedgerows and hardwoods. We literally want to put it there so that it is not a disturbance. Electrical disturbances are not applicable. Ten acres have been designated for off-street parking. I'm sorry, that's G, F and G. H, drainage system will only improve with our product. I have met with D C officials and consulted with local drainage professionals on how to properly control any drainage issue on the property. I, we have designated approximately ten acres of parking and have a twenty-three hundred foot driveway and feel confident there is no issue with traffic. We don't have a driveway like that and we're hosting twenty-five hundred to three thousand people on our existing party. We get it. Attractive grading and seating is an absolute no brainer. This is a huge investment for us and we are excited about it. To say that we will make this into a beautiful property is an understatement. I have photographed the property before and after and are happy to provide you with pictures. We will only enhance this property. Okay, there are no existing special use permits held on this property and never have had any violation of any special use permit. Rate of entry, the planning board members are always welcome. And I provided you with my cell phone number. Anybody wants to come there anytime and check this out, I would appreciate it. We feel confident we have provided you with a thorough and detailed application. We went step by step, not only with us, but with our lawyer, actually three lawyers. I've hired three different lawyers for this nonsense. We went step by step through your town ordinances for this special use permit application and feel confident we fall well within these guidelines and perimeters. If you have any input ideas to make this event even better for the town, for our neighbors, for our community, we are open to it and appreciate it. I'm not going to bother reading that next page. Like you said earlier, character doesn't matter. I could be the worst guy in the world or the best guy in the world. She could be the worst person or the best person. It doesn't matter. It comes down to your ordinances. We fall damn well within them. So I won't bother going into the character. The, the county has already approved this. They read the black and white. I want to, I want to touch base on that. I have hired three different lawyers. The second of which, I told him I own five acres and a neighbor bought a hundred and ten behind me. I told him I was disgusted with his plan. I showed him the plan and I showed him the ordinances. And he said, I'm sorry bub. He says, you want the good news or the bad news? I said, I want the good news. He said, the good news is you still have time to introduce yourself to that person, shake his hand and hopefully form a good relationship because this person has every right to do this due to that town ordinances. It made me feel like a million dollars because I then had the privilege of telling him, I'm the guy that bought this hundred and ten acres. Thank you. I appreciate that. I do have the right to do that. I didn't want my lawyer to just tell me what he thought, what he thought I wanted to hear. We, again, we are not asking for any variances or special requests. Nothing. And I feel like I'm, I'm not being stern or I feel like I have a chip on my shoulder, which I kind of do. I'm trying to be clear and accurate and I don't mean to be offensive by speaking like this. Why would the town have an ordinance like this or want this? Why would you guys want this? I refer to your comprehensive plan, plan on your website. You are looking for people to invest in this community. You are looking for youth, diversity, new businesses, et cetera, et cetera. I quote under your same comprehensive plan, our vision. Efforts to get, and I'm quoting this, efforts to gather the community, celebrate, work together toward our common goals. Opportunities to encourage young people to live in this town. Future land use under your comprehensive plan. A new business being allowed under a new special use permit or existing special use permit being kept in place is always preferable to vacant buildings or unused property. In short, here we are. We, we are what you're looking for. We are the future of this town. People like us. And I won't touch base on it. I reluctantly sent out, I knew there was going to be emails against us. I sent out asking for a few emails. I did not realize you were going to get over fifty emails. I sent out twenty text messages. So not only did the people that I text, I thought maybe five or ten would reply. It makes me feel like a million dollars and it brought her tears numerous times. Over fifty people replied to that. That means our friends sent it on and cared enough. And I had to email them or text them and say, I appreciate it, but you had to stop. We are blowing the planning board's phone up. I didn't even, if I was going to blow it up, you would have gotten thousands. And you might. This town will benefit from this in many ways. I'm just going to read a couple of things and I never realized how much I liked, I love this little town until people started asking me questions. And my lawyer said, you should just make a list of the things that your little town, your little shop party pays for in this community. I'm not looking for accolades or any of that shit. I like this. I enjoy this. I love this. This town saved me. I was rough on this town for the first seventeen years and I've spent the last, the last twenty-five years paying back to this town and I'll spend the rest of my life paying back to this town. I have given away eleven toolboxes to children in this town. They've all been paid for by that party. I've done five trips for kids, giving them five hundred dollars. I posted it saying I was going to give a kid five hundred dollars to travel because I feel like don't kids to travel. And four of my friends posted up, I'll donate another five hundred. That's the crowd I run with. Last year at my party, one of my friends who owns a sticker shop said, hey, sell these at your party. Whatever money proceeds you get from it, do whatever you want for it. Do something nice for a kid. We bought colorblind glasses for a kid in Attica. My buddy Bruce, just, Bruce Goldfield just did the Corona convoy, called me up. He says, let's put this together. I want to do something fun for the community. I want to raise some money for Crossroads. This, everybody's down in the dumps. Let's do something. Bruce and I and a couple of other guys built it and we raised over twenty thousand dollars for this community. The margarita run, I've donated that every year that I've been aware of it. Want to know why? Because there's a pavilion girl, I didn't know what cystic fibrosis was. That, my party pays for that. Our events pay for this stuff. I donate to her every year because she has a daughter that goes to Pavilion. I donate to her turkey trot every year. She never has to ask me. I send it. I don't care. Every year I sponsor our kids soccer, Pavilion Soccer. I sponsor the softball. I sponsor the baseball. I don't even have a son. I sponsor baseball. I pay for a sign every year to be on this field. L-timers, every year that the girls service league has come to our party, they have raised between six and seven hundred dollars a year. I think Ms. Jay said that they only raised three to four thousand. I have receipts for way more than that. That party pays for that. That's what these little events do. They get the community together and they raise money for miscellaneous nonsense that might not mean anything to anybody. A kid getting a free fishing pool means something. Pavilion Fire Department, I always donate to it. I've never, I have needed them. They had, the one time they had to come for a heat stroke. I've never needed them. Someday I might. I hope I never do. Doesn't matter. I donate to them. As far as their auction, I don't know how mu, we never even kept track of how much we spent at the Pavilion Fire Auction. We do it because it's Pavilion. I don't go to anybody else's. I spend it right here. When I do our party, I spend thirty-five to forty thousand dollars every year. It's hard to keep track of. I spend that money right here. The T-shirts are bought here. The food is bought. It saves a lot. Might as well be here. The porta-johns are spent as local as I can buy them. They're here, Leroy. The entertainment, I hire boys from Pavilion. They play. It's all spent here. That mon, our event, forty thousand dollars, just what I spent out of my pocket is spent right here, just on that. If you do the math on just what I have been a part of in the past four or five years of fundraisers, I figured we raised between fifty-five and sixty thousand dollars. I don't consider myself a fundraiser. I just enjoy that and it's my town and I do it. Not that it really matters, but the local gas station, every time I walk in there, they say thank you. Because it is their best day of the year when we have our party. They sell out of beer. They sell out of pop. They sell out of chips. They sell out of Slim Jims. They sell out of ice. Every time I go in there, they say it's their best day of the year and they say, thank you, thank you, thank you. I always tell them, you don't have to thank me. Thanks for having me. Please tell us when it is. We'll stock more. No, no problem. Thanks a lot. That's what these little events bring to these towns. Getting lost on my own notes. This is not a retirement community. This is a great community. We take care of our retired, but this is not a retirement community. This is not a gated HOA community. This is a community that gets together and does things. We are well within your ordinances, our ordinances. We are respectful people. We work hard and we work hard to better ourselves. We work better to better our community. We work hard to make our kids good kids and our kids' friends good kids. Show me someone who has done as much as us and is doing as much as us and I'll be impressed. Especially show me someone of my naysayers that is doing for our community what I'm doing. Show me one of them that is raising money the way I am randomly. There are things I haven't even bothered posting about because I don't really care to share. I do a lot for this. She does a hell of a lot for this community. We will continue to, but I will take zero nonsense. I expect that you read your ordinances and, and follow them. If there's anything I can do to be a better person or a better neighbor or a better community member or to host a better event, you bet your sweet ass I will do it. But I'm doing this. If we don't do a good job, you don't have to renew this permit, but we damn well deserve the right to at least have the opportunity to do it. I appreciate your time and again, I don't mean this in an upset way. I am emotionally charged. I respect all of you and I respect all of you, but don't mess with my rights. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, if you could go on to the microphone.
So one question I had is on the application that talks about an ATV and automobile event.
Correct.
So you talked about ATV and what the decimals were for ATVs. What role do automobiles play? Are they there as a car show? Are they on the track also making noise? What, how does, how do automobiles fit into your plans?
That would, the automobile would be in the mud bed as in your ordinance. Your ordinance is for ATV and automobile.
So we might need to understand decimals or the amount of.
Is it in your ordinance, the decimals?
To be a good neighbor, you might need to understand.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I'm asking, is there a decimal?
No, they're not a specific.
Okay.
We do not have.
I would do.
My question was.
Right, right. No, I get it. For the mud bed, not for the hill climb and not for an ATV course. Yep. They have mufflers. They, I mean.
Well, some off-road vehicles have mufflers.
Anything in this permit has to have a muffler. I can't have an, an open headed.
My second question is currently you have an event and you have seven other people that said twenty-five hundred people home and it's on three acres.
It's on five, it's on, it's on, technically it's on eight acres. Somebody else I know sent an email saying.
What is the expected attendance at the event?
Well, the event that we have now has taken us fifteen years to accrue twenty-five hundred to three thousand people showing up. Truthfully, if we had an event and five hundred people showed up for something that were, is new, I would be impressed.
Do you plan on putting any cap on your attendance or do more people have come to the event? I guess is what I'm trying to.
Yep, I totally get it and it's a great question. On a first year, I don't see how you can have a cap. No, I, I hope if five hundred people came, that'd be great. A thousand people came, that would be great. I would be, if ten thousand people came here and spent one dollar in this town, that'd be ten thousand dollars. Holy crap, if they did, that'd be thirty thousand dollars. But with, with that being said, world-class events don't get ten to fifteen thousand people. I don't know how a new person in Pavilion, New York that wants to have the community get together is going to get ten thousand people. I know it's a, it's a good question, but I'm saying to you.
I'm just trying to understand the scope.
Yep, yep. Well, every year, same, you did get ten thousand people. Come here next year and be like, okay, we were at your event, you had ten thousand people. We could go from there. Right now, we've been doing it for fifteen years, a different event, and we have three thousand. I think the number ten thousand is a pretty strong number. I think the number three thousand is a pretty strong number. I don't give you, I'm not, I'm just giving it back to you, the answer like.
And my third question is that you might have said it already and I just didn't catch it. It starts on a Friday night, you pull onto the track Saturday morning, you're on the track, okay, or is it?
I don't know where you came up with that. Did anybody else, you read what I said that. You totally missed it. So, I don't know who has said this, but that is going around town and I saw an email, no, no, then I saw an email. I know, I'm just saying, I saw an email that said, this is going to be seven days a week, sixteen hours a day. Okay, we want to do, I read your town ordinances, the timeframe. We would like to do Saturday. Your ordinance is, I'd have to find it real quick, but your ordinance is, I believe, on a Saturday, nine AM to eleven PM. We would like to do ten AM, which is an hour past your ordinance, only open the doors to let people in, hang out. If you, whatever vehicle, event we're doing, we would let them go from noon to probably five or six. Definitely, I got things to do. I'm shutting it down after six.
Everybody is off.
Everybody. Everybody, well, people will, there will be no vehicles running, and people will leave the premises. I don't know if you've ever had a party, it's hard to get ten, twelve-year-old children to leave in a timely fashion. However, our event, which speaks for itself, you are all welcome to come to my house the day after our hot rod party. Thousands of people there, you'll be hard pressed to find a beer cup. We run a tight ship. And we are within your town, your time.
I'm not just doing that, but I was trying to understand, get clarification on. I understood that you said the events will not be running past the seven o'clock.
Yep.
I'm trying to understand, when will the property be?
Well, it has to be, the entrance has to be off by eleven, correct? Eleven PM? We are hosting this on a Saturday. There's no Friday. We're hosting this on a Saturday. We would like, you have to start no later, no earlier than nine. We would like to start at ten, actually not even start, but open the doors. We will probably start at noon. We will end at five or six, let's just say six. We're going to end at six. I will have every person off that property by eleven o'clock, within your ordinance.
Answer my question, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Donnie, you want to throw something at me? You got any questions on the ordinance? All right. Matt, you got anything for me?
I think, I think sticking to the details of it is good. The clarification that Bill wanted is just, you know.
I totally get it. And Bill, sorry if I, you were saying Friday, Saturday, and it's like I never said that. And I actually apologize, it was in my notes, ask each person. I meant to go down through there and ask each one of you. And you're right, a hundred percent, stick to it. Did you read anything about campgrounds here? Did you read, are we talking about ordinance six twelve, correct? Okay, we are talking about six twelve. That's what I'm here for.
Yeah, right. I know, I was just asking that when we first met.
I came in and asked questions, which, right. I came in and asked questions. If anybody ever wants to apply for a special use permit, don't ever come to a planning board and try and learn. Do your own homework immediately. Hire a lawyer, read the ordinance, and know your rights. Because once you say anything in a small town, people will ask you it, they will lie, and they will say bad things about you.
Just to bring up what Deb's saying.
Yep.
When, when you came to approach the board to see if, if the interest, the likelihood, that's, that's what she's thinking about.
I understand that.
The last time you discussed with the planning board, the last time you discussed with the planning board, you said your dream was an RV.
I didn't say, I said, we have different ideas on how we compete for things, and what we want to do. I understand that. We are talking about section six twelve. No, that wasn't, right, right. I get it. That wasn't hearsay, but we are literally talking about section six twelve, correct? Is there any, have I applied for anything?
No, you didn't. You didn't express interest to this board at any date.
Right.
With this property, what potential was. So she's just asking about.
Right, I get that. But I was told by someone in this room, only discuss this. So I'm like, okay.
Correct. And she's asking a question, that's all. I'm just saying.
No, I get it.
None of this board is going any hearsay whatsoever.
Perfect. Nope, I haven't put in for any applications or any questions about any campgrounds, just this six twelve. That's what I put in for. Thank you. Oh, no. I know. If you've seen how I've been attacked for the past four months. Yep.
I understand the landing rate is very close to a property in going in for what you have right now.
Correct.
Do you have any plans to make an in and an out? Give us, give us whatever. Would you change that? You have a lot to make a plan, a plan for property.
Correct.
Will you be able to change the entrance or the exit? I'm knowing that, just for traffic purposes or for that?
Traffic purposes, purposes from the parking, all the way up to where the driveway goes out. I have created two driveways.
Our concern, because we live in the neighborhood.
Yep.
And we know the noise travels.
Correct.
That's where, where we are personally, where I am, where our family lives, is about three quarters of a mile away from where your property is.
Correct.
And I am a little concerned about the noise they're facing.
Yep.
We've also got kind of three hills in there, I'm assuming they're kind of higher ground from the topography as well.
Yep. There's not, there's not three, it's one big hill, but when you read the top graph, oh mine, it's, it goes up, plateaus. The course goes up, we haven't made any course, but we would like to make something just like everyone else has a course around their property. Right.
One concern is, is noise drift on any noisy, a situation where there's a lot of noise that may carry the sound. And I think that's our biggest concern for us anyway, just get to smokes there. The topography and the burning of pollen and self-magnetic contaminants. And I don't know how you can avoid it, except if you stick to those hours of the day, that's not a problem. A couple of years ago, there were some burning on that property near there, and it drifted all the way down into the building.
There was a lot.
Burning piles of.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm assuming that the neighbors won't be able to hear it, so I think that's for everybody's concern is being.
Sure, sure. And I think that's why you guys have set in place a thousand feet as a buffer. There is no physical buffer ordinance in your ordinance. There is no physical buffer set that you have to have this or have that. However, I still have hedgerows, cornfields. I totally get it. I totally understand what you're saying. However, I think when someone steps foot on the property and then looks, and looks back, maybe people could visualize like, okay, yeah, this is way back. And that's why you guys have a thousand foot.
Let's just say you wouldn't take the hedgerow down, just to give yourself.
First of all, one of the reasons I bought this property is because when I used to work, I won't say the farm, and I love them. One of my jobs was to take the excavator into every hedgerow and knock them down. And I hated it. And I said to this farmer, I said, it makes me sick that we're ripping these hedgerows down. You know what he said to me? He said, well, Jesse, someday you work hard enough, you'll be able to buy your own land. You can leave the hedgerows however you want. And I just bought a hundred and ten acres, and I love those damn hedgerows. You will never see a hedgerow come down on my property. I love hunting, I love all of that. However, everyone else has the right to tear down my hedgerows. I hate it. Yeah, our hedgerows are beautiful, and I'm excited to show people. It's beautiful. Oh my goodness. I would love, you know where Ray's house is? The gray house? Where the cleaner combine sat? If you really looked at that cleaner combine, there was garbage and debris all around that. When you came around back of the house, the back of the house, there was garbage mounted up, there's one tree that's choked about six feet up. Garbage, how many bags of diapers were thrown on the ground, had to clean up. Luckily, I had a good friend that took care of us and let us use his excavators. And I scooped that up and put it in the dump truck and had to pay to get rid of it. The amount of debris that we have cleaned up there, I hate, it sounds like a jerk, but we literally should get a high five. We did a damn good thing for this town cleaning it up. The eyesore of a combine, there's two combines on that combine, we scrapped over a hundred thousand pounds all sat within probably a hundred, a hundred and fifty yards of that road. It was an absolute eyesore, and I photoed it all. How many, yeah, banned, three abandoned cars, just sitting on the property.
Talking about camping? Do you have any plan that comes in early? Do you have campers back there?
I don't plan on having any campers. Better camping. I didn't think it was, I was just asking. Correct, no, no, no. I don't plan on, honestly, I don't plan on it being, like, this got blown way out of proportion. I literally had too much going on in life as far as staying late at something and hosting people. The shop party is a neighborhood slash community celebration. That one goes late into the night, all the neighbors are there. This, I literally want to have a fun day with my family, friends, and kids. And it's going to end at six, we're going to help clean up.
And that was your initial?
A hundred percent.
And then, I think people would like to be interested in talking to the property.
You're more than welcome to. Yep, I'd love that. Yep. Thank you, Liz. Okay. Anything from you?
I think hoping to other questions that other people like to have is regarding alcohol, there's going to be drinking, any weird stuff, and testosterone, trucks, and racing, and things like that, alcohol, people drinking, and things like that can get out of hand. Whole ones around there.
Is that in the ordinance as well? I'm being serious. I wondered if there was something against it in the ordinance. I'm sure between the, I don't know how many people you know that drink at noon. Okay, then, then, then maybe they will. If they're your circle, then maybe they will. If they're my circle, I'm sure they will. On a Saturday, someone drinking from noon to six, I don't see why they don't deserve the right to. I could go for a beer right now. And I would, I would say at six o'clock. I don't know how many beers they're going to have, but, yeah, I'm sure somebody's going to have some beers. If you and Russ came, would you have some beers? Okay, perfect. Good, good, good to know. Then we better close down the softball fields, too. Yeah. Thanks, guys. I appreciate your time. And again, I don't mean to be short with you. I've been attacked for quite a while, and I'm, I'm not taking this lightly, so no offense to any of you. Thank you.
So, this is all, it's, don't want to say you, because we knew you had a plan.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, no, I know. And I've probably, I probably look like I have a chip on my shoulder coming here. After I left that meeting, a certain neighbor went around to every neighbor, three weeks before we purchased this property, and had told everybody there was going to be craziness and booze and drinking, and seven days a week and sixteen hours. So then people started calling us, and we're like, we can't even go and introduce ourselves to these people, because we don't own the property. So three weeks later, we finally closed on the property. And we have heard so much nonsense from people that really stole our ability and our excitement to go around to the community and say, hey, we're joined, Jesse, we bought this property. Our first impression was stolen, and it was given away in a bad way. That's why I come here with a, with a chip on my shoulder. When somebody moves into our neighborhood, everyone that moves in our neighborhood, my wife and daughters bake either a local bread or a batch of cookies, my girls make homemade carbs, and I either buy a thirty-pack of beer, champagne, or wine. We go to them when our business starts, everyone that has moved into our community. And there's people there that have moved to our community, and you bet your ass they can vouch for it. That's how we introduce ourselves. Welcome to the neighborhood. I'm Jesse, this is my wife, Jolene. My kids will all stand up, shake their hand, and endorse. That's how, where I'm from, on Linwood Road, we welcome people to the neighborhood. We don't go around with a petition, be lousy, we at least, that person has not spoke to me once. If someone, anyone in this room ever has a problem or a concern, I'm the guy. Come and talk to me. I'm a good guy, I'm an approachable guy. I'm more than willing to work with anyone. I want to go above and beyond to be a good person. But if you can't do that, I'm going to, I'm like a fan. Whatever you throw at me, I'm going to throw right back at you. If you throw me love and goodness, that's what you're going to get, I'm going to cover you with it. If you throw me deceit and lies and meanness, that's what you're going to get. So that's, I apologize for having a chip on my shoulder. We have been attacked for four months now. I know you haven't, but I'm letting people know, that's unacceptable, and I'm not going to take it. So, and I do apologize. I went by my lawyers, I've spent a fortune in lawyers. This was supposed to be a fun, community get-together, exciting thing. And it has turned into this, and it infuriates me. So I do apologize, you're right. I do have a chip on my shoulder, but it's kind of deserved. And it's not against any of you. Again, I appreciate you guys, and thanks for your time. Any other questions for me? All right, thank you.
I think in the effort or in the interest of people in this call, it would be good to hear from any of the neighbors, any of the net roots, are there any in this room, or are they outside? Any person that wanted to speak?
Hi. My name is Dolmerson, I live on Perry Road. I actually sold the property to Jesse and Jolene. I currently own five separate parcels on Perry Road. Parcels that bought up to Jesse's property, which surprised me when I did not get a letter, when I was not notified of this hearing, even though I'm a member. Rob LePointe verified that it was not on the list, so I don't know if it was because I'm outspoken for this, and maybe I was.
Sir, I explained that it was because you recently purchased the property and the county ledgers were not updated.
Rod, you told me that you think it's because of that, but I did not receive it, it doesn't matter. My name is still on the deed. If the town can't keep up with the paperwork, to know who they got to send letters out to, that's not my problem. I never got a letter, and I'm just standing there, I own five parcels next to that property. I own a hundred and ten acres that I sold to Jesse. A lot of these people here that are making the complaint and are against this are people that attend Jesse's party. These are, these are people that own, on average, less than five acres of property, around a hundred and ten acres. All of who knew I was selling that property, all of who never caught, never approached me, asking if they were able to buy the property. They were happy with the three acres, two acres, two and a half acres, or whatever they owned. They were happy with that. And just to point out, too, you were talking about, one board member was talking about noise. I believe you live on Route nineteen, correct? Rogers Road, okay, okay. So you're down even further. But Route nineteen, just, just to point out, Route nineteen on five, seven, and seventeen, New York State DOT did a study, traffic study. Seven hundred, I'm sorry, three hundred and seventeen tractor-trailers traveled down Route nineteen. And this was an average day in a, in a seven-day period. Eighteen hundred and twelve cars, okay? Take the tractor-trailers, take the, the decimal rating of tractor-trailer with a J brake, tractor-trailer going down Perry Road, and compare it to an ATV that is going to be quarter mile from the nearest house. Perry Road on the opposite side has an average of forty-one tractor-trailers a day going down that road. Three hundred and fourteen cars. So there's a lot of traffic on both sides of this property. When I, when me and Jesse first talked about selling this property, by the time I talked to Jesse, I had several companies that approached me about the purchase. One was a power company, one was a trucking company, one was a cannery, and then multiple One was a power company, one was a trucking company, one was a cannery and then multiple farmers. And I actually had opportunities to sell the property for more. I decided to sell the property to Jesse and Jolene because of what they have done for the community in the past. And, the, uh, they, they explained the event to me. I did my own research on it and I said, absolutely, you guys can, you guys can buy the property, even taking, taking less than I was offered from these other companies. Because I wanted to have another community event, just like the event over on Linwood Road in the town. Um, another board member brought up then the amount of twenty-five hundred people that come to the party. And there is, there's twenty-five hundred people there. Remember these, many people in this room, I'd say maybe even go to scarcity, half the people in this room, um, attend that party. And yes, twenty-five hundred people come, but these twenty-five hundred people come from all over the world. And, and yes, I said world, people come from New Zealand, people come from Canada, Mexico. It's a one day event, people are not gonna travel from New Zealand or Mexico for a mud bog. This is a once a year event that he has where he'll gain twenty-five hundred people. And again, I don't know what this will, will gain, but when you're comparing apples to apples, it's not. You know, we're comparing apples to oranges on that. One of the, one of the main property owners, the person that, that went around with a petition before Jesse owned the property, before Jesse even had a plan for the property, I will, is, and this, and, and I do have proof of this, if anybody would like to see it, is generally not home from spring to winter. The main person filing this complaint that went around with the petition is generally up, up, up north at their cabin and is generally not home other than to maybe mow their lawn, take care of the house. So the main complaint and the main person that gets brought up in this a lot is generally not even at that residence. One of the, one of the other big things that really bothers me on that is, there has been, in the last three years, there has been dogs running these properties on Perry Road. The DC has given at least three tickets and, and nothing has been done. We can't even go on our property, Jesse's property, my property, I have nothing. There's no, the deer hunting on it has been eliminated because there's not, there's dogs running. You got five German Shepherds that one time chasing dogs twenty-four hours a day sometimes. So, when somebody wants to come in and do something, you know, we can't, we can't hunt our own property because there's no deer there. I don't let my kids go across, I know this is a different issue, but I'm still bringing off the fact that, you know, what can be done and what can't be done. I can't even have my three-year-old, my eight-year-old go across the road and, and hang out on a property or go further than a hundred, a hundred feet behind my house because we have, we have dogs. Five German Shepherds and I don't trust them, good dogs or not. But nothing can be done about that. The town has been approached, th- this is what the DC officer told me, that the town has been approached, the judge has been approached, the county's been approached. Nothing can be done. So we can have dogs running properties, people getting tickets, not paying the tickets or paying the tickets, and nothing can be done about it. So I'm not able to enjoy my property, but there's nothing that I can do about it. Jesse brought up the snowmobiles, I live on Perry Road, I live, I, I, I constantly spending time on my property, but it's up to Jesse's. Snowmobiles, the greenways right there, you got ATVs on the greenway, you have snowmobiles on the greenway. There's, before I sold the property to Jesse, I went back to this property that you're, that is up here tonight. And I have pulled out countless people, that was a four-wheeling ATV heaven back there. Because your owners at the time lived on a different road and people just thought they could go back there and have a free roll. And there was probably more ATVs and trucks on that property over the last two years than we at one event. And nobody complained about it, there's not, there's not been one complaint about these people, these ATVs and trucks that get back there. In fact, some of these people's complaints, I pulled their sons out, driving their four-wheelers and ATVs out on this exact said property. And I wanna touch on the garbage. To me, Jesse is underestimating the amount of garbage that was on this property. It was absolutely disgusting, you couldn't see a lot of it from the road, it's been grown up, tires, cars. People, people would go back, because again, the prop, people knew the property owner lived on a different area. People would go back there and dump their garbage. People don't go back there and dump their garbage anymore because it's posted, people know that it's now all. And, but garbage, their fresh garbage, diapers, you name it, were dumped back there on this property. And, and the other thing, I, I know so many people behind me that maybe didn't get the letter that was sent out, had so many misconceived notions of what this meeting was about and what Jesse was doing on a property. When someone goes around, before Jesse even knew what he was doing on the property, he comes and asks questions, I wanna make sure that the public knows this. That one individual went around telling every other neighbor what was gonna be done on that property before Jesse even knew what he was doing on that property. He did not even have a plan yet, but the neighbor had a plan and all sorts of plans when Jesse didn't even have a plan yet. That to me is putting a bad taste in everybody's mouth. I, I specifically know people that were approached with this and then come to me and say, Joel, what is going on? How could you sell a property to these people knowing that they're gonna do this? And I'm like, wait, back up a minute. None of that is true, none of that is true. I've been copying on emails that have been going around and there is just so much false information out there that it, it's just, it's unbelievable that anybody in this community, somebody that doesn't even spend summers in this community can go around and get people riled up with no facts whatsoever. And to this, to this day, this person and many people that are, have a complaint against this, have not even talked to Jesse or have not talked to me, with attempts being made to communicate with them, have never came to us, Jesse, Jolene, anybody and said, hey, I heard this is going on, can you give me some clarification on this? Nobody, the person that did this petition never asked what was gonna happen on this property, but just assumed it. Oh, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars have been invested in this property already. And that's just with the presence of the property, some equipment to clean up the property, I've taken equipment down there, I've spent money. Jesse spent a lot of money and countless time, he's got his daughters down there cleaning up garbage and, and just, you know, keeping the place clean, but also teaching his, teaching his kids life lessons. And, um, there, there's just no negative to this whole event, I just can't, I, I must be in a different mindset than a lot of these people that are having this complaint. Because I just can't see how a couple days, three days a year, this can have, do anything detrimental enough to even have a negative thought in your mind. A little bit of noise, well guess what, we live on Route nineteen, we live in the country, you have noise. If you wanted to do something more on your two or three acres, then go buy more land. But for anybody that has, to anybody to tell me or someone else what they can do on their land, when it's well within the laws and well within the rights, to me is absolutely absurd. I am not, this is not, my name is not on that permit. But I am, I have the chip on my shoulder that Jesse has, probably more than any, maybe even more than him because I just, I sit back and I see what's happening with, with Jesse and the neighbors and, and, and I'm caught in between it. Because people are coming to me and saying, Joel, how come you let this happen? And I'll say, wait a minute, no, this is not what happened, please talk, talk to Jesse, give him a call, here's his cell phone number. Nobody calls. But they got, they got, they got bad information. And let's just say that they got, now we're clearing this up tonight. Board member, you, you guys are asking questions, hopefully we have some clarity, um, a lot of good questions. And, I would hope that, you know, these, these, even these people that are against this, now that they have some clarity, can maybe, maybe think twice about this because there's just, there's so many benefits to this community. I have three parcels of land up there for sale. I have the opportunity, I can sell it to residents and you guys can have, we can build three houses up there and we can increase our taxing, we get the income to this town. Or I can sell it to pig farmers, I can sell it to a cannery, I can sell it to a power company and they can vote with you guys. And you guys should spend thousands and thousands of dollars on attorneys to fight it. We think, it can go both ways and I'm willing to do it either way because I think it's absurd that this has even gotten this far. And, I, I just think that, um, you know, everybody needs to step back and look at the big picture and look, you gotta come, I know, and I know it's gonna be easier for you guys to say, geez, I have five, ten people that are against us here maybe in this room. And, it's gonna be easier for me to tell Jesse and Jolene, no, because they're one, they're, they're one person, one entity, than it is to, to explain myself to these other five people. But I tell you right now, between Jesse and myself, if we would not have told people not to come here tonight, you'd have had a thousand people trying to get in this building tonight, minimum, there'd be a thousand people trying to get in here. Everybody, I've had probably fifty people call me today and I'm not even Jesse, saying what time do we gotta be there, what time do we gotta be there? And I just said, no, the whole COVID thing and, and I knew there'd be a limit on how many people could get in here and we said, no, back up, this, let's take, I think common sense prevailed, the law is the law, I've contacted attorneys, I've spent money on attorneys asking about this myself. Because I didn't wanna get up here and say, the law says that he can do this and there's different things and there's boundaries and not be right and be actually, you know, saying wrong information, but I'm not, it, it is what it is. Yes. No, but I, but I think, I, I think, um, you know, taking up a little extra time, being a, being probably the person that sold the property and, and a person that owns the most property and actually Jesse, I think they have a right. And I appreciate your guys' time up there, so, thank you.
My name's Ron Zarble, I live on, um, Lake Street, just behind Jesse's property. And we have talks and we discussed his, uh, project, which we know is gonna be a commercial project in the middle of the residential area. It will grow, he talks about burnout pits, he probably will eventually have drag strips in there. As the gentleman just said, we're getting...
Sir, the speaker has the floor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we know this is gonna grow, it's a commercial endeavor, this man is very smart. He has many businesses, he's successful at, and he's gonna make this one a success. As the gentleman said before me, they're gonna have people coming from all over the world. Controlling it and scope is gonna be very hard to do. How is the town gonna do that, we don't have a cop. And if you call the county, what's the county gonna go after them for, you're talking zoning things. So the county can't do anything. When he had his, uh, other events, did he ever have any issues? Did he ever have any complaints, did the police ever show up? According to Jesse, he's never had a complaint, never. Of course you won't hit a ticket because there's nothing to ticket you on. It's not a criminal thing.
Let him talk.
Okay. Um, I'm strongly against this and mainly I'm doing it because of six twelve, the same thing Jesse's talking about. Now if you do six twelve, C one, it states that you shall not use or shall not be located within two hundred feet of a body of water. There's wetlands and a pond, now he's already addressed the wetlands. Uh, it also says that you are not permitted to have it within a thousand feet of a dwelling. He's conveniently, if you look at his cartoon that he drew up, it isn't a regular plan. It shows thousand-foot circles from Ray's house and Mr. Lassiter's house. But, as a result, it pushed the property back or the bank back on the property towards my house. It's roughly seven hundred feet. Where's a thousand? His application also states that every dwelling is at least a quarter or a mile away. That's an awful short quarter mile, thousand feet. So, just the fact that he's on top of my house by about seven hundred feet, he says, well, you've got deciduous trees and I'm gonna put in a seasonal crop. Okay, you're only gonna run this thing when the trees are in full bloom and the crop, the corn is at full height. How much is that gonna stop when you're running all across the top of hill? It's not gonna stop any of it, it's like having a screen door and you're trying to stop this noise. Now, under section six twelve, C two, the planning board shall take into account the nature and development of surrounding properties. For the most part, the nature around or exactly contiguous to that property is residential. You're taking a residential area and you're throwing a commercial activity into the middle of it. It also says that it should be reasonably protected, the public health and safety, from offensive and unhealthy noise, dust, fumes, smoke, odor, traffic and so forth. If you're talking twenty-five hundred people and you divide that out by five people per car generously, you're talking five hundred cars. To get that onto the property and off of the cars, you're talking, or off of the property at exit time, you're talking forty-five to sixty minutes to clear that area. That's the Tulane Road up there on Perry Road, good luck getting an ambulance in there or if you have an emergency vehicle. That road is gonna be plugged up, the poor people that do live on that street aren't gonna be able to get out of their driveway. As far as the, uh, pollution, you're talking all forms of noise, exhaust, fuels and light pollution. If he's gonna run this thing late, he's probably gonna eventually put up light standards. There's no regulations that say he can't run this thing late or more often. The regulations are wide open for that. Anybody thinks that this guy is gonna be controlled and kept within a certain bounds, I think by the way he acted tonight should have a pretty clear indication of how this man thinks. He's a winner, he's a competitor, he's gonna win, he's gonna make this work. To make it pay, as a commercial enterprise, he's gonna have to put a lot of time into it and run it. I talked about the head rows, okay, section six twelve, E one, no person shall operate a cause or operate a course as to cause unreasonably loud and disturbing noise of such a nature, intensity or duration as to be detrimental to the peace and welfare. Okay, what he's, his sound sampling is sort of fuzzy. He did a period of time, we're talking races or, uh, activities that are gonna be for an extended duration. It's nothing like what he timed out. The loudness of it, if you're doing anything with a race car, is gonna be a lot louder than what he's talking about. The modulation is another problem. The revving engines, it's not a constant, if you throw something in a mud pit, the guy's gonna be accelerating and backing off, accelerating and backing off. He's gonna do this all day in my backyard, within seven hundred feet of my house. I can see his area when the trees are not leafed out, they just leafed out this week, it's beautiful, he's right. But before that, it was wide open. And then after the fall, when the leaves fall, I can see this location from my back door. So, another one of his lines that he put in his application, it's not true, I can see it, I can hear it and I'm within a thousand feet. You're gonna have hundreds of vehicles that are gonna be racing that are gonna be brought in on trailers. They'll be running in groups, ATVs, whatever. Quite a bit of noise. Section two sixteen, part E one, no person shall operate in a manner as to cause disturbing, riotous or tumultuous conduct within the town. He keeps asking about noise levels. It's just disturbingly noisy, there it is, you can't do it. Anybody that thinks you can put vehicles and alcohol together, everybody, anybody over here at DWI, I'm sorry, won't cause a noisy, riotous or tumultuous situation, is sort of fooling themselves. I have yet to see a situation where you introduce alcohol where people are gonna be calm and respectful. Section six twelve, E two, no person shall operate a course to allow the creation or dispensing through the air of noxious fumes, odors, smoke or dust, to the detriment of the peace and welfare of the people. Especially the ones that live right next to it. Exhaust pollution is a problem as most of these vehicles don't have catalytic converters that spew large amounts of noxious fumes and particulates upon heavy acceleration. Tire smoke from burnout pits and time trials will be hanging in the air. Hydrocarbons will be concentrated in the area imperiling air, water and ground. Section six twelve, E one, loudspeakers, which Jesse claims he's not gonna use. Eventually, I wonder, if there's no rules about it, you can hear Lancaster Speedway two miles away from my brother's house. Even if he tries to adjust it for a neighbor as he says, what about the other neighbors? He also states that he's gonna work with his neighbors to settle any conflicts that may arise. I think the way he handled Mr. Butler and marginalized the man and had contempt for him, which he seems to demonstrate to this board, where he threatens and bullied almost to a fact that, this is my right, I'm gonna do it. Seems really a strange way to present yourself as a reasonable person. When I contacted Jesse, not only did I send my questions to the zoning officer of the town, I also emailed him to include him in the conversation. It went nowhere, there was no conversation. He didn't come back to me and said, you know, you got a point, we'll try to adjust this. Nothing. And I think that shows that he was talking to his lawyer and anybody that thinks you can shut this guy down in a year, is gonna have a half a dozen lawyers on their back next year trying to stop it. Okay. Um, essentially, going through the law, I think you have the right and you're correct that this... that this should not be approved. This should be a denial. Thank you. My name is Ron Zarbo and I appreciate your time. Any questions? Thank you.
Anyone else for landowners?
My name's Dana Corre. My wife Roxanne, we're on Perry Road. We have one hundred and sixty-five acres, which directly is directly across from the property that Jesse and Jolene purchased. I have great admiration for Jesse and Jolene in the way that they raise their children. Their work ethic is very, very strong. They're honest, honest people. I can't say enough about how much crap they've cleaned out of there and how beautiful it looks back there right now. You have to really work your asses off. We have issues with snowmobiles on our frontage all winter long. Not just one day, not two days, not three days, all winter. We also border the greenway. There's snowmobiles, there's ATVs on there all year long. Not just one day, or two days, or three days. Three days is less than one percent of the year. One percent. You had a better chance of getting COVID. What I'm trying, I'm not trying to make light of this at all. This is very serious. And we run a business on our property. And the reason that we have our business is so that we can pay the taxes and pay our mortgage, just like anybody else around here tries to do. And what they're trying to do is to provide a land legacy for their children. How many people that age can do that? And what are their, your children, you know, are they gonna be fortunate enough to be able to purchase property when they're old enough to? There isn't that property around anymore. It's getting gobbled up by the major farmers. So I just, I, I really admire what they're trying to do and I hope that you guys will approve the plan. Dana Corre. You have further questions, preserve? It's on the east side of Perry Road, directly across.
You've heard my name. My name is Ray Butler. I live at one zero one six two Perry Road. This project will border my wife and my property to the north and to the west. We feel that this project is gonna greatly impact our quality of life and the value of our home. We enjoy quiet country living. We enjoy an ag rez district, plain and simple. I have a couple of concerns. I've got them outlined in different areas. For example, the first one I have is traffic. What I did is I researched the different mud bog type facilities within New York State. I looked for ones that had ATV and the truck mudbogs. The one that most closely resembles us having ATV events and truck mud bog events is Maximum Power Park. It's located in Poland, New York. If you Google search that, you will see last year at one event, they had over five thousand people attending that event. A very similar event, over five thousand. That's over twice the population of the building. They could potentially be the property next to me. Obviously, that will create some traffic concerns. Whether you figure five people per car, four people per car, if you get three thousand and four people per car, you know, you're looking at seven hundred and fifty cars. And you get to five thousand, you're looking at one thousand two hundred and fifty cars. Obviously, on Perry Road, and if you've got a limited time, go in and out. If you've been to a concert, you know how that works. I've been to Farm Days a number of different times. It's the same thing there. There's congestion on the road. So as soon as they come into that, if you go to that property, you'll notice on the road, it's a double lane road, you know, double yellow line road where you can't pass to the south. It ends right about where that property begins. The reason why is because it's a blind hill where the Felcons live to the south. So when they crest that hill, that is when they're gonna see the entrance to this park. And obviously, that could create traffic concerns. If there's any backup at all. And I do not see anything in the plans that would address anything that would speed up the entry to the facility, which is the twenty-three-hundred feet off on the road. What I mean by that is when I go to Farm Days, there's multiple entrances and multiple roads. What you do when you get off the road is you fan out and you pay your parking fees to whether it's five or eight people. There is none of that in this plan. It's just a simple farm path. A one-lane farm path. You can see that in the satellite imagery he sent you. It's a one-lane farm path from the road all the way back to the event parking. So obviously, I have concerns with that, the road and the congestion on the road. I also have concerns because of how close that farm path runs to my property. It is fifteen feet off of my property. It is thirty feet off of my driveway. If you had been out there and looked at it, it goes, it runs parallel with our, our driveway. Our house is roughly two hundred feet off the road and it goes forty feet away from our, our garage. Snakes are on the back and then it's headed west. So we will have all of those vehicles, whether it's seven hundred and fifty vehicles, twelve hundred and fifty vehicles going right next to our house. There's absolutely no way with that being that close, we are not gonna have dust and noise. Plain and simple, absolutely no way. Then you also think about that traffic. If it's a one-lane road going back there and it's buffered on the back by a hydro in cornfield, when that is packed with vehicles going in or out because it's a limited time in, limited time out, if someone has a heart attack out there in the parking area, how's the ambulance gonna get there? If there's a fire, how's a fire truck gonna get there? The back part of that field to the west, behind our house, once you get to the one part we call like the fishbowl, so once you get about two-thirds of the way down, there's a depression in, in the field. The previous farmer, George Bailey, in the fall, when he would bring out crops, he would normally have to go on the brim of that to get his crops out because his tractor couldn't pull it up that hill. So it's had inclement weather for a number of days and that roadway gets that damaged by seven hundred and fifty, twelve hundred and fifty cars, whatever, going back there, how is a fire truck gonna even get back there? How are police gonna get back there if there's an issue with that? So emergency vehicles are not gonna be accessible for the, where the event is being held during times of entry and exit, especially when it's a one-lane road unless what they go to with one. Or somehow another cut through a hydro that's densely filled. So I have obviously concerns with that. Other things I have concerns with would be the noise. The noise is going to be an issue. I think Mr. Coates' decimal reading is flawed. He used stock utility ATVs. When my sons were younger, we used to belong to all-county ATV club. When we went to their events, many ATVs there had aftermarket exhausts, which are much louder than a stock exhaust that he tested. And really, in the grand scheme of things, ATVs aren't the big noise producer. The big noise producer are gonna be the mud trucks. From what I have read, you're gonna find decimal readings from anywhere from one hundred and thirty to one hundred and thirty-five. I'll refer to another mud bog facility, which is known as the Barnyard Boggers. Barnyard Boggers, central New York, mud truck. They pride themselves on their noise. Quote, "Some are high horsepower gas or alcohol engines that are loud as heck and some are big diesel engines that have crazy black smoke pouring out as they tackle the mud." So this isn't like fantasy world on how big these events, how noisy they can be. This is reality. I went to mud truck events in New York State. The potential is for these things to be huge. The noise is immense. The dirt is immense. So when you look at the decimal readings that he showed, obviously, it's not appropriate, especially when you have multiple events, whether it's the mud bog events, running with the ATV events, the hill climb events, obviously, with the crowd, it's gonna magnitude, magnify the noise. I also have some issues with the design of the actual park itself. Corn is screening is ridiculous. The land at this point isn't even fitted to plant corn, let alone having corn planted on it. So if you have an event July fourth, how high, how high is the corn gonna be? And obviously, anyone that knows anything about farming realizes you're not planting corn every year. You have to rotate crops, whether you're cash cropping, you rotate it with soybeans or your dairy, you rotate it with alfalfa. So what happens on those years when you are rotated? You put it in alfalfa and it's gonna be in alfalfa for three, four years. So obviously, that doesn't work. I don't believe that his drawing is done to scale, not even close to scale. When you look at his drawing, his sketches, hand-drawn sketch, it makes it look as if you can plant corn as a screen between our property and the laneway going back. It's only fifteen foot wide. Show me a modern farmer that's gonna plant something that's only fifteen feet wide. I don't think that's gonna happen. Also, it doesn't show any setbacks. It doesn't show the wetland setbacks. It does, I, according to my calculations on the app that I have for distances, there's three houses on nineteen that are within a thousand feet of the, of the mud bog. There's one house that's within a thousand feet of the ATV trail. It doesn't show on the thing, there's a natural gas right away that runs through the central part of the property. That's not showing there. It seems to me that the site plan needs to be done a little bit more professional and needs to show setbacks. Other concerns. When you look at race courses and any race course that I know, they have practice nights. So if this thing gets through, apparently, there's gonna be in the special use permit, absolutely no practice nights. So apparently, it's okay to put in there that no one's gonna run this other than on event nights. No one will be on the ATV course, no one will be in the mud bog. I also have issues with it doesn't show any restrooms, any outhouses. Now, if you are gonna be putting an outhouse within the ten acre parking area, then obviously, you're taking away from the ten area parking. I don't see anything that even meets, because it's a public, this is not a private event. This is a public event. So you have to meet ADA requirements. You have to have handicap parking. Didn't see that outlined in there. You have to have handicap restrooms. Don't see that lined in there. And once you start taking away from these areas within the parking facility, is it truly a large enough parking facility? On his humble five acres, when he has those twenty-five-hundred or three-thousand people, not everyone fits on that lot. Most people park on the road. So as soon as you approach that five thousand, where are these people parking? On the road? So I do not think it is professionally designed. I do not think it is well thought out. Doesn't talk anything about concessions, hazardous material control. So you've got monster trucks out there running in the mud bog. Someone blows a motor, blows oil, or blows gas, diesel, whatever. Are there any provisions to handle that, control that, especially with wetlands to the north and to the south? Didn't see any of that mentioned in there at all. What I'm asking for you to do is to just stop and think about this project. Put your home in my home's location. Would you wanna live there with this going in? He's asking for permission, has to follow all the rules, and I do not believe that it does. There is absolutely no way that this will not impact our quality of life and the value of our home.
My name's Guy Lasser and I'm not used to talking about these things. Honestly, I wish I really didn't have to. So if I'm very nervous, I am. I did meet Jesse. Jesse did come around, introduced himself. But seems to be a fairly decent guy. But I do have concerns. One of my biggest concerns is, I'm a neighbor that, I'm a good guy too. if I'm against this, you already heard the stance that Jesse said he would take. And I really don't wanna be in that position next to an owner that can take that kind of a stance. And you've seen the stance tonight. He said, it's going in, it's gonna happen, and anybody that stands in his way, that's a problem. I don't care. I mean, put yourself in my shoes. Secondly, I'm not big on numbers. But I can tell you that three days a year, doesn't sound like a lot. If he holds this event on June first to July first, that's four weeks. Say he holds the next event from July to August first, that's another four weeks. Now, as you all know, we don't get a whole lot of summer around here to begin with. So if we got one event and, well, let's say three events in eight weeks in the summer, that's a whole lot different numbers than what he's trying to make this out as, as this one percent. That means most of my summer, once a month, I'm gonna have to listen to, you know, this event that he's got going in. Secondly, I'd listen to Dana speak. Dana's a great neighbor. I've got a great rapport with all these neighbors. And I, I really hope that I don't, you know, ruin any rapport. But, you know, everybody's got a right to speak and a point to their own peace of mind here. But I can tell you right now that Dana lives way back off of this, on his property. I mean, I don't know, we walked, he lost his finger and we baked him some cookies and we, we ended up making that walk to his house. I'm gonna tell you, it was a long walk. It was a really long walk. And he said something about the snowmobiles. Well, yeah, they do have snowmobiles going down through there. And my son-in-law was one of those snowmobiles. And I can tell you right now, Jesse, or not Jesse, but Dana flipped out over the snowmobile situation because it was on the front of his property. So when he says that this doesn't, you know, that this shouldn't bother anybody, just the snowmobile bothered him. But now that him and Jesse are friends, that really doesn't matter. And then the, and then as far as Joel goes, greatest guy in the world, really, truly is. He's had property all around the property and it's all for sale. And he's gonna be moving, from what I understand. I mean, I don't know if he is or ain't, it's kind of up in the air, but this really ain't gonna impact him. He's got all of his land for sale. His houses, I know his house was up for sale and he's talked about moving out of state. doesn't even affect him. So, but the neighbors that are around there, when Jesse walked up and first met Jesse, he said this was his dream property. And the words out of my mouth was, well, this is my dream property. This is the property that, you know, I don't make a whole lot of money in life. We do okay. But it's beautiful where I live. We see the deer out there, we see animals, we see rabbits. And, you know, we have four pomeranians that run around the yard and it's quiet and it's peaceful. We were just sitting out on the back deck this last weekend and just admiring the beauty of everything. And we are in a, I wouldn't even have bought that property if there was gonna be, you know, this big race diesel boater engines, things going on. That house wouldn't even have been a consideration for them. We're on the north side. We bought right up to it. So we're, yeah, that's where we are. so that's my stance. I mean, it's my dream property. And, you know, to have this dream shut down because, you know, he said it has five acres for this event. He owns five acres. He owns five acres. He didn't put it next to his house.
Mike Fisher, my property is behind Guy's house, 60 acres of land. What land that borders right up, we got some property where the people are sitting up there behind the place already. Just kind of concerned, got quite a few issues, but I'll make it quick. You know, livestock around there, I got resources, I don't think that there'd be too much into these, all this noise. You know, it's just not the noise pollution, okay? There's some statistics there that were rolled out, 47 decibels or something, that's ridiculous. You're going to have probably 50, 100 things running at once. So there's volume, okay? Multiply that times the amount of these vehicles at once. Okay, the CO2 fumes and the dust, I think that's, doesn't need much further than where you folks, if you were living next to something like that, probably understand how that affects things. And there has been a precedent of shutting down stuff like this, and I think they had a few more lawyers with their propane plant that this fellow has for that, and that was a no-brainer, and we shut that down unanimously, by the way, thank you. And again, there's some of the same issues. The speed line, it's a 55 mile an hour highway, I already talked about it being a single lane road, the dips in the hills. You pull out a junction and either head, you know, north or south on it as it hits ferry road, and especially if you're heading towards Leroy, you can look all the way to the south as far as you can see, and if you're just going pulling up at a reasonable rate and looking, you know, not really rubbernecking it, but just driving peacefully out there, by the time you can get a quarter mile up the road, there's a vehicle just right on your ass right there from out of nowhere. Okay, so now there's going to be vehicles parked down the side of the road. Again, it's been addressed about how you get emergency vehicles in there, cars parked down the side of the road, the litter, it's a free, and in this COVID thing here, there's no sanitation for, you know, effluent wastewater, human excrement. I clean the whole junction road, I got to clean it every day because the dirt bags throw and shit all over. Okay, that's just people living around there. What do traffic goes up and down there? So I can hardly imagine what kind of stuff's going to be laying on the road coming from one of these things, with these bushes and dope beans leaving this place. Okay? There's going to be beer cans, Big Mac boxes, those cheap Indian cigarettes, and all this other kind of nonsense, diapers and diapers and everything else you could possibly imagine. I'm not touching that stuff. I don't think our highway department or the county, because it's a county road, I don't think they should have to touch this garbage. Where, even if there's like a Johnny on the spot, is that thing going to be washed down every time somebody hoses it down or throws a coiler in that thing between bouts with people waiting in line? I doubt it. I don't see how. And with this issue going on, how that can, anything could even go forward at this point in time just on the nerve back to that alone? And they have a commercial thing where it's zoned at residential. Where's the, is that even been okay? I think that has to be addressed before this even goes any further. And I have a lot of other issues, but I know time's short. There's other people that probably like to take the floor. And I know this would be a series of meetings, and I don't like to show my whole deck at once. But I just think there's something that some folks, you know, folks got to think about here. Our property value, you know, I'm not going to throw numbers around and brag and talk about it. Somebody's on the 4H club and all this nonsense, I don't even know where there's lines for that in a permit. I've pulled out many permits in many municipalities. I've never seen a line for a line of EUs and blowing smoke up people's ass over a personal project. Where does that even come in? It's ludicrous. You must think you're a bunch of dumpsy who break stuff up like that. It's unbelievable. And there's just a couple other things here that are, that 55 mile an hour thing, signs, loudspeakers, you know? If this did go through, I think there'd have to be dates in advance and times etched in stone. And who's going to police the noise? I mean, like, like someone brought up before. It's just, by the time somebody comes, where's the, are any repercussions or what's going to stop us? I don't think these are the type of people you want hanging around at one of these, in the town shelter. Well, I don't know what kind of people do at these things. People that come up here and throw threats at the town board.
Pardon?
Let's keep it, comments to the board, please. Comments are to the board from the speaker only, please.
Yeah, I don't know who he's talking to. But just a couple things, like I said, you know, I got a multiple list, and I'm going to just leave it there for tonight. Thanks for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I would like to ask at this time if anyone is willing to voluntarily give up their seat for somebody that's been waiting out in the parking lot for an hour and 45 minutes? No one is being forced to leave? I'm not trying to coerce anyone to leave, but if you are willing, we do have other
I won't say, I won't take up a lot of time, go into a lot of the detail that has already been spoken of and all that. I would just like to say that I'm adjacent to the property on the 1819, next to Ron Zarble. And I'm just, I guess my main issue is, is the decibel thing. There's going to be noise there, and you can use 48, obviously there's no ordinance for it. But we moved in that property 20 years ago, pay our taxes, support the community, just like Jesse does. I've coached Blue League, I've done all that stuff. Being in that property, I'm very concerned about property value. Someone, if I ever do decide to sell, someone going to want to move in there with a racetrack in the back? Right? I guess I would just ask, plain and simple, if you were in our shoes, and the property was directly adjacent to that, what benefits do we receive out of that? I get all the stuff for the community and stuff, and I appreciate what Jesse's trying to do. I think he is a good guy, but it obviously is not a benefit to us and it could want to be a detriment to our property and our property value. Thank you.
We own, my husband and I own Pavilion Motorcross Park up on Taylor Road. I just thought maybe I could shed a little bit of light. We've owned the track since 2009. We host events that are on like a circuit. We have four, there's four of us all together, we do rotations, we do actual sanctioned events. And when we went to get this all up and running, there were things, there was protocol that we had to follow. We, of course, went to the town, we went through the county. And I think some of the concerns, I can completely understand, and I can feel for them, being neighbors, the traffic being one of the issues. I get that. When we had to do, when we did ours, we had to have a traffic study. We had to have that done to show how we were going to get people off the road in an appropriate amount of time. We're going to make sure that we have a driveway that has the capacity to bring people in fast enough or exit fast enough. Again, we also had to have insurance, and with insurance, there is also a whole bunch of things that you have to do with your insurance. They might require fencing, then you have to be X amount of feet away from someone else's property. There's so many guidelines and restrictions that you have with the insurance that will protect the people around you. As far as garbage, again, as part of our plan, we had to have a dumpster. We had to make sure that we had the appropriate thing to take care of everybody's garbage because even though it's carry in and carry out, it's not. So, and it's our property, so we want to make sure that it's clean and it looks good for the community. Also, again, porta-johns, we were talking about that being an issue. We, per the county, we have to have X amount of porta-johns and potable water, and we have to be able to wash our hands at a wash station, and we have to have that accessible to everybody that enters the facility. The number of people that are going to be attending, I, you know, I hear that being a huge concern. We're part of a circuit, and we've been doing this since '09. And the most we probably have ever had on our facility or at our facility is maybe over 1,000 people at one given time. That is over an 11-year span. So if that just gives you some sort of an idea. And the type of people that come, I kind of find offense to that because I feel like just because they choose some sort of sport and recreation like that, doesn't group them into someone that is, that litters, has profanity, that drinks a lot. That is not necessarily true. And per our insurance and per our guidelines at our facility, anybody that is driving a motocross vehicle, UTV, ATV, any of those things, you cannot be drinking that day. And if you are, you are excused from the property. You are escorted off. And it's usually by me, not my husband, I'll tell you that right now. Because we have no room for that. There's no, people need to be respectful to other people. And I can guarantee that Jesse and Jolene will make sure that happens. I have been to their home when they hosted parties, and they've had a whole bunch of people there, and they were able to control these people that they didn't even know, and they left their property perfect. And when it is your own property, you're going to have pride in that. So the other part is ambulances. You're worried about somebody getting hurt. We own a motocross track, I understand that, but again, you have to have a plan. You have to have a plan in place. We have to know exactly what's going to happen if somebody needs medical attention. Their insurance might require that they have a medic, that they have to have an ambulance. Those are all those things that the town board has to take care of, the county has to take care of. The people around, just that live around in the residential, have to trust the fact that all of these things are being put in place because those are the things that already are taken care of. Those are already the things that are already accounted for when you're doing something like this. Like I said, we've been doing it, this is our 11th year running our business, and we have, we have never had an issue. We always, you know, we've always spoke to all the neighbors, we've never had a problem with that. The sound, you know, the most sound you're going to get is when they're taking off. So in our facility, behind our start gates, you have a chain link fence with the plastic, there're like slats in it to keep the buffer of the sound. So that's when you're going to have, say, 40 bikes that take off, and there's a loud sound all at once. That's when it's going to be the loudest. Once they spread out and they're in open, you're not going to, it's not going to be as bad. And the other part is, it's not, from what I understand, it's not residential property, it's agricultural property looking for a special use permit, which is exactly what our property is. It's agricultural with a special use permit. So that's a big difference between saying that it's only residential. So I don't know if any of that was helpful to you just from our experience. Obviously, our track is not in Pavilion, it's in Covington, but I am a resident of Pavilion. We live over on Creek Road, which won't be far from their facility. And in my opinion, we need to have more things like this. And three days out of the year, for, to give people something to do recreation-wise, to bring people into this town, if it's all set up and planned accordingly, this shouldn't be an issue. And it won't bring down property values. It's, you know, it's just, if everybody can respect one another and they do their job and they make sure that the town does their job, the county does their job, and Jesse and Jolene keep things up and keep things organized, there shouldn't be an issue. So, yeah.
How close is the nearest resident to the track that you run, and how would you resolve issues with your neighbors?
We've never really had any issues with our neighbors. It's not, they're not far. They're less than a quarter of a mile. They're about, yeah. Yeah, they're not far. They're just down the road. And then across on 246, you know, they hear stuff, but all of our neighbors, we've been, you know, they've been really great about it. And, you know, a special use permit, it's up for annual review. I mean, it's not something that, it's just a given once you have it. So you put your information in, the things that you want for the year, and that's good for a year. If you want to expand on that and do anything more, that has to be approved on a yearly basis. So, you know, it's one of those things that, you know, they're saying that you can't stop them after a year, but technically, if there was an issue, it could be. Yeah, anyone else? Thank you.
Okay, we've got still several speakers there in 9 o'clock, so we've been a little going to try and get, we've got Kristi Hopkin. And again, he asked, you know, if we're certain of stuff, if we can, we want to do that.
Okay, my name's Kristi Hopkin. I'm actually not from this community, I'm an outsider, so to speak. I live in Ordens County, my husband is from Genesee County, and I think I met the Pooch about 10 years ago. My husband has been going to the hardcore happening party for several years, and I thought it would, I really thought it was like going to be a ridiculous drug fest, like you're testosterone and drinking. And I went to my first one, and I couldn't have been more wrong. I was absolutely stunned by the way that Jesse and Jolene can command respect. I thought it was 1,600 people. It doesn't feel like 3,000 people. I was nothing but impressed with how organized the event was, meticulous attention to detail, the traffic, traffic of the movement of the vehicles, traffic flow, people flow, the meal, camping, everything about it. It was safe, their staff is professional, very safety oriented. And actually, I fell in love with the Poochs. I keep going to the party because I like the, I like the party, it's not even, actually, I've kind of gotten into heart racing a little bit. But, yeah, I guess that's just what I want to say. Somebody who wasn't really into it, who kind of had my reservations about it, and I can't find the words to describe how they command the respect of so many people and keep them orderly. And at the end of it, the next day, everybody helps to clean up, the place is spotless. It's like nothing I've ever seen before. It's very impressive. So I have no question that whatever they need to do to organize these other events, it will be top-notch, professional. And I love your family, the way you're raising your children, wish you were my favorite.
Thank you.
I currently live in West Lafayette, Indiana, and I drove out today to support Jesse and Jolene. I was going to talk about their character, but I guess you all have heard about that. As a former Napa Auto Parts store owner, I've spent a lot of time on farms. And it sounds like the noise and the dust and everything is kind of what I saw a lot on the farms. So if it's agricultural usage, should be okay. And there again, if it's a one-year permit, if things don't go well the first year, as much as I like Jesse, maybe he doesn't get a permit next year. as much as I like Jesse, maybe he doesn't get a permit next year. But I think it's worth a shot just for the community and to bring people like me out. It was at the first party and I hope to be at their event this time. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Bruce Schofield. Jesse made a mention, he sent out 20 texts on one of them. So, I own Schofield Transfer Recycle. Well, I can firsthandly vouch, and then I realized tonight, this spring, Jesse's bringing in truck load of garbage. Garbage after garbage, load after scrap, scrap. He didn't tell me, he didn't ask me tonight to say, can you come up there and vouch? I didn't know until tonight if that's where it all came from. Jesse asked me, he says, come and speak on my AVA. He says, I got a lot of neighbors that are against it, so I'll be glad. So, I realized tonight, I put it all together, all this garbage, all this scrap metal. It shows you what kind of heart and integrity and character this gentleman has. He's a steward of the land before he even opened it up. And I just realized this tonight, he wasn't doing it. But the more important thing, this spring, when I called on Jesse, I had a conference back in April 5th. We raised money for Crossroom Health, raised $21,000. Now, there was Jesse, there's two other businessmen in Pavilion. There was six of us on our team. Jesse and his family jumped in right away to raise $21,000. We all put in a lot of work. As soon as we got done, Jesse said, we'll do that. That was the first thing we said, what are we going to do next? Again, when it comes to heart and integrity and character, I wrote three pages and stuff, we all know it. I could head bike, he could head bike, he could head bike. I can empathize what Jesse is in. I'm in the garbage business. I've been in his shoes. I can sympathize, I can empathize. I'm sitting right where he is. Nobody wants a garbage business. So, I've had all the, everything thrown at me just like he is. It's tough. Us businessmen, you know, we've all heard the saying, a dollar and a dream. We all heard that, a dollar and a dream. If you're not a business owner, you think that's winning the lottery. Well, when you're in business, a dollar and a dream is start yourself, taking nothing and creating it. That's your dollar and a dream, creating something. We don't do it for the money. Our reward is we accomplish, we built up, we made a business. I done it, Jesse's done it. Anybody in business for themselves, it's a sickness we get, a sickness of making a business. Don't take away from this man and his family for trying to start a business. It's going to be a special use permit. You're going to have them come up. And I can speak from experience because I do the same thing. Again, I'm in the garbage business. Hold his feet to the fire, hold him accountable. There's not to admit, my, my kids, I would co-sign for and vouch for. I wouldn't do it for, for anybody else. But this gentleman here, I co-sign or I vouch for. He's the only guy, I'll give that to him. If there's a problem in your zoning, that you don't want these motor sport parks, well, guess what? It's too late. You should have changed it before Jesse made the investment of the property. You know, you can't lock the door after the horse is out of the stall, too. If, if you didn't want motor sport parks, just like place didn't want garbage transfer station, you should have addressed it before tonight, but before he bought the property. Now, anybody in this room, I could have, anybody could have bought that property. We're a capitalistic society. We all have the opportunity to buy something and make something of it. But don't, after he makes the investment, don't say, no, you can't do nothing. All the neighbors could have. They could have, they could have co-opted together and bought it to, to save that property, but nobody did. But this guy, he had the balls to do it. It's plain and simple. He had the balls to do it. Now, don't shut him down now. We're all in this area together. I'm from Stafford, it's all one community. For two and a half months, we've all been told, no. So, it's easy to tell Jesse, no, tonight. Make the stance that you're going to bring the community together, hold his feet to the fire. He's already admitted to everybody what he's going to do. Now, throw these wild accusations, drugs and ruckers on the road, that's, that's bull. I've seen it firsthand how he operates. So, I'm one of the 20, I'm speaking on his behalf, thank you. I do a lot of business in Pavilion, I thank the customers. This is a great area for our business, for our family business. So, I want to take this time to thank everybody that's done business with us.
Hi, my name's David Swanson. I actually am a construction professional. I have a consulting business. One of my projects, one of the things that I do is helping people get through these processes, through planning boards. Jesse asked me to help him out with this one, doing it for him as a friend. I'm not going to charge him for it because I think it's important that he has a little bit of level of professionalism with this. Some people have been questioning, I bring that level of professionalism. So, you know, some of the things that I'm doing with him is going to be helping him, you know, make sure that all your boxes are checked. You know, I take the emotion out of the equation. I'm an engineer, so what I do is I check boxes. If there's a question, we come up with the answer, we make sure that we stay within the guideline. So, there'll be surveys if they're necessary. There'll be professional planning if it's necessary and we'll get that done for Jesse to make sure that you guys have the things you need to go through, check this and make sure that the special use permit meets the requirements of his own, you know, planning board and town board. So, I understand everybody's, I've been through hundreds of these. There's a lot of emotion and I can understand where people are coming from. We all invest in our homes and things that are important to us and when we do that, we lay our hearts out on our sleeves, but we have to look past the emotion. We have to look at the facts and that's what I'm thinking for people. Again, I, I, I guess for poking plants, I think that's part. Developers developing things, there's always something, there's somebody that, traffic studies, surveys, BEC issues. So, if there's anything that you'll have, Jesse has, he has a resource and we're helping him through that. If there's questions you have, make sure you guys have my comments from earlier, send a email and all my contact information's in there. I'd be glad to take care of any of those. But again, I check boxes, I have a process, we follow the process, we get our answers and then make decisions. Thank you.
Looks like dome length is down. Keep it short. I know, that's my wife's, I asked my wife if she'd speak better than I did, so what do I say? She said, just don't get going, just keep it short. Anyway, I live in Leroy, been there 24 years, Pennsylvania, hence my accent. Known Jesse for, whole time we've been there, been to every one of his autograph parties. Matter of fact, the earlier ones, the motto of my family, to go to a nice celebration like that is to be the first to arrive and the last to leave. Take advantage in the full funk. And, and, and I did a couple of years. That's tougher to do as I, I age, but the years I've been there, one thing I got to say about Jesse is, well, I'm here because I care and I thought he might back. After he spoke tonight and I got to just what's going on here, it was obvious to me, Jesse stands well enough on his own two feet, he doesn't need me here. But what I observed, the problem is one is there's alleged drugs at the parks. I have to speak for that. Absolutely no. No drugs, never seen him, 15 years, drinking, of course. All the times I've been there, I've never seen a fight breakout. I've never seen a whole getation resulting from angry people jacked up on alcohol that the police had to come get involved in. No, no problem. The trash, again, ludicrous. You, you can't go to a publicly professionally run event that is clean as his party within eight hours of its completion. You won't see anyone. He's runs a tight ship, he doesn't put up with any bull crap. And, you know, so I don't need to say more about Jesse. The problem I see tonight, we've got some landowners that are losing, they're suing. It's unfortunate, happens every day, all over the world. We don't make land anymore. It's going away every day. I think we should be honored that Jesse's trying to do what he is with it and we're not going to cover it with 15 acres of asphalt and concrete to put a big box door or something. This is a pretty neat idea he's got and I think it's going to serve wonderfully for a lot of people for a long time. For landowners, it's unfortunate, I can understand. I think if you work with Jesse over the years, he will go out of his way to satisfy concerns to the best of his ability without being bizarre. The land was for sale. We should have rallied together and bought it. That's the only way you could preserve the spring and the pavement. I think Jesse's going to do good things with it. It's not going to be an out of control thing that hurts their property. I think they probably, he probably, sounds like we've done so far, has enhanced the property value instead of caused neighboring properties to decline. So, I, I, I think it's a great thing. We live in a unique area here in upstate New York. We are here because it is that way. And what Jesse has planned to do is to make the best of it and provide a family fun activity for many people to enjoy.
I'll be as brief as I can. My name's Rick Sarble. I don't live here, but I'm here a lot because my brother. I live next to Lancaster Speedway, approximately a mile and a half away from it. If you, if you travel at the crow, maybe it'd be only a mile. All right, so, you know, and in between the Speedway and me is everything from a thruway to wooded lots, some 600 pp, some 25 acres or more. I mean, it's all, you, you wouldn't know the Speedway was there unless you stumbled by it, unless they're in operation. Now, I don't know, Jesse, never met him, I had no bone to pick with him. Alls I'm saying is, what we look at and what we continually look at, I haven't heard here tonight much at all. And the one lady sort of touched on, we have regulations, we have things we have to do. We had to do studies, we had to do traffic studies and EPA studies and all this other stuff. Isn't that not something he should have done or he should be doing? Or you could demand that he do. As far as the lighting and the noise and all these other issues that were brought up here tonight, we have dealt with already and continue to deal with every year because, just like Jesse. Don't take offense, no worries. Just like Jesse, it's going to get bigger. It ain't never going to stop. It ain't his three little girls in a one four wheeler going up and down the little path in the backyard. Okay? I'm not mocking him. I'm admiring him in a way. Everything I heard here tonight, this guy can do anything. He can do everything and he loves everybody as long as he gets his way. As long as he gets his way. Now, next year, next year, when he comes back and tells you, well, you didn't say I can't, so I'm gonna. And he's going to do 20 times what he's did this year. And I don't care if he drinks, I'll have a beer with him. I'll have a beer with him. But I didn't see nothing in these plans. And nothing he seems to have a habit of leaving things out. He tells you, oh, this little bitty goody goody stuff. And then the more you talk to him and the more you question his friends, they contradict everything he says. He planned doing this, right? When he bought the land, Jesse, you admitted that already. He also admits and brags on the internet, I might add, because I'm a hunter. I'm a hunter. And that's all a hunter. He's a real hunter. He's a trophy getter. He'll get what he needs to get until you will know in certain terms how he did it. He likes to talk about himself, especially on the internet. How he's going to put a speakeasy in over here. Because Cuomo ain't going to tell me what to do. Those are his words. He's got his friends sort of talking up that this is some kind of my rights. My rights as an American, we're all American. It was my brother's right to do what he did and to expect to live in peace. It was all these other people's rights to be here, just like you. And he has all the rights in the world to chase that dream, but do it right. Do it legal. Do it respectful of other people. There's nothing in here about the chemicals. This is what bothers me professionally. I've had to deal with chemicals my whole life. The Speedway produces everything from carbon monoxide. I'm not going to go through a whole list because you guys probably already heard it, I'm going to leave it for you. The most dangerous thing they will produce is called poly-nucleons, which nobody brought up here tonight. Carbon dioxide, nitrogen dioxide, lead, sulfur dioxide. You know what else he likes to do? Burnout pits. Those are right. You get in your car and you see how long you can smoke them tires. Now, some people smoke from here to there, other people smoke in a static position. But you know what they're doing every time they spin those wheels? They're producing poison. Undisputable poison regulated by the EPA and the Clean Air Act. You might want to look up the Clean Air Act. Does what he wants to do. Think here. What he wants to do, and I'd like to talk to this organic farmer that's going to buy his corn. You know what organic means, right? Most people who buy it knows what it means. I wonder what they would think if they found out their organic corn is being grown inside of a racetrack, around a racetrack. And then if he sells that corn, let's say he sells it for human consumption, can you guarantee any of these chemicals aren't going to be in dirt, corn, or that people eat? Or if he sells it to another farmer? Has there been any studies done on the transmission of particulates through the food? I'm not saying what he wants to do is bad. I'm saying what he wants to do is really not thought out well. And what it's going to produce in the long run, I'm almost done. In the long run, what's what he's doing here tonight, what he wants you to do is give him a blank chat. Just give me a pass for now and I'll be a good guy. Well, then if you're such a good guy, you don't care. Do it right. Get the studies done. Put it in writing that I will only operate one day a week, three times a year and never exceed that. Put it in writing that I will not sell or allow alcohol, that I will not sell food. There's so many questions here, that's why everybody sounds confused. And, and I'm not saying he did that on purpose, but there's a lot of stuff in there that's common sense questions that he never once breached. And I appreciate your time. that he never once breached. And I appreciate your time. No matter what anyone tells you, I can tell you who's racing. I can tell you what the special is at the snack bar in Lancaster by sitting in my backyard. And I'm a race car head. You know what I mean? I'm not against the car. I'm against these four wheelers. Just keep it real and safe.
She asked if you like where you live. Do you like the location that you live in?
Despite the, despite the fact that I am not doing my long You asked me a question and then you didn't ask the board.
I know, and I, I, I was, I was just asking you, just a quick answer, do you like where you live?
I thought it was gonna be my turn. I thought that.
Good evening. Uh, first of all, thank you guys for being on the board. And it's sometimes a thankless job. You're here way past your bedtime. And, but it's, it's a great thing. And I'm glad there's a permit process. And my wife and I, we, we are property owners in Pavilion, but we live just over the line of telegraphing from our own way from Jess and Jolene. We have a track show. I'm gonna go work in and get a special use for that. This is our third year. I don't have a special use for that. When we decided to have the show, my wife and I went to see Jesse and Jolene because they do their, their hardcore happening. They do it correct. And they do, you know, so we, we had to change a few things because we, we don't do a donation. We do it for, uh, donation for Alzheimer's. Um, one of the first contributors to our cause, he still, um, so I'm glad there's things in place. I think when he gets his something running, everybody on the board, everybody in the community, I have a 23 year old son. He goes to the races. I grew up next to the fairgrounds of the table Jesse playing Speedway. Every Saturday night, my dad still lives there. Both my brothers live there. You can hear him. It's one night a week in the summertime. It's not life altering. It's, it's not that big a deal. Yes, there's some dust. Yes, there's some noise. But, uh, you know, this thing is gonna be, I think, great for the community. And I think it's gonna be exciting. And I can't wait till I have little grandkids and I have to say, we're gonna go over to Jesse's and we're gonna watch the people do some cool stuff. And lastly, uh, what they said about the respect, this guy respects other people. About eight years ago, my son was in the hospital for 15 days, uh, had a skin graft after a bad burn. The only non-family members that showed up to visit in this strong hospital, Jesse and Jolene, Jesse brought him a stack of hot rod magazines. He still has their characters good. They'll do anything for anybody at any time. Call them in the middle of the night, they'll be the first one that you place to help you. So that's all. Thank you for your service and thank you for your time.
I'm Carol Freeman and my husband and I live on Wyoming Road in Pavilion. And, um, thank you for your service. The thing that I would like to say is that these ordinances and these things that you deal with are for a reason. And if someone is against them, that's their right. But to slander someone, it's not right. I'm talking, I guess, as a mother figure. Um, I feel that the town of Pavilion, we've lost a lot. And you see young people that are energetic to want to do something in our town. And I don't live near where Jesse and Jolene are going to have their spot. But we live in a country, we have a railroad behind us that goes every day. Do we like the air? No, but we do. We have ATVs. We have snowmobiles that go by. You're going to have things that maybe disrupt your day. But all I am saying to you is please just listen to some of these young people that want to do something for our town. And someone like Jesse and Jolene, whether they know everything right now and they'll have to learn, uh, they'll learn and they will do it the right way, the best they can. And I just hate to see people that just will try and ruin other people because they're trying to do something. And I'm not a good speaker, but that's what I have to say.
Hi, I'm Jerry Harding. Uh, I've been friends with Jesse for a long time, worked with him. Uh, I came here pretty much to do a character reference, but I, I don't think I need to do that. Everything, everyone knows his character and the kind of person he is. You can see that by the amount of friends that he had come. And you might say that these are just his friends and that's why they're here, but we're here to support a great man. And if you gave him a chance and would actually try to be his friend, you would see that too. So the people that have been attacking, uh, the, the different parts of the party, the traffic, the, the parking and all that, um, and saying that he's here, not trying to do stuff not the right way. That's why he's here. He's here to do it the right way. If he wanted to have a party and go around everyone's back and do it the wrong way, he would have done it. He would be out there with four wheelers, mud pits and having a party, but he's here getting that permit to do it the right way. Looking for guidance from this board and community on how it is done and how we can do that to appease everybody, make people happy. If, if the neighboring people could, would have come together, come, come to him and be his friend, he would go above and beyond to make sure that it's not impeding their property or their, their worries. He would work with them to, uh, to ease their, their troubles, to ease their mind. So, uh, what I'm saying is just try to be this guy's friend. Uh, he will work with you and, and, uh, and it's just everything would be a lot easier, I guess, if, if, uh, everyone would just work together instead of arguing. So that's all. Thanks.
Anyhow, y'all have some, uh, something they would like to say? Come on up there. Wait a minute. Sir, do you want to come up?
I do. She wants to go. I, what was your before, during, or after purchasing this property? What was your initial intention to be there?
My initial intention of buying this property is to invest in people's property. I wanted to buy this property in Pavilion. Uh, and I've wanted this for all of them. Thank you. When I looked at the factors and the interest on loan, I had to figure out a way, how can I even solve it? The $3,300 I put for renting the property is not worth it. So before we really did anything, looking to uh, the town ordinance, I asked questions, talked to different people, talked to, when I was working, I came to the town ordinance, yes, it is what I should know. Yes, it is in our ordinance. Yes, this is, if you've been required, if you've been meeting requirements, you can do that. Therefore, after I left and I knew there was, uh, a person there that was already had a fit, uh, I went to a lawyer. I heard that lawyer. That lawyer was my lawyer. He just kind of looked at it quick and he was like, yep, Jesse, you know what, I gotta do it. I don't know how. That's the one we better define. And he said, he knows the sport. He said, it's very first sport, it's a good sport. They will actually leave black and white. They're gonna go with it. I felt they're gonna understand that this is in the class. I felt like I wanted a second opinion. I got a second opinion. Same thing. I got a third opinion. Same thing. We made a decision. We talked to a couple of other people and they were excited. We went both ways. This is in our town ordinances. We abide by the rules. There are so many things that were said tonight that are not ignored. I don't have to abide by all of these. I have to abide by what is in the work or what's in my act. If you can be down, whatever, whatever you will. Make me abide by and hold, as Bruce said, hold my feet to the fire on what is in this ordinance. Not all kinds of nonsense that we heard, but what is in this ordinance. That's the law. We made a decision. We invest in it. We love this town. I don't need to go on about that. Then it was on my mind at the beginning, it was on my mind in the middle, it was on my mind. Do you have that right? It's not like we ran this and just said, oh, screw it, let's take a chance. I wanted to go with it. No, we can't agree with people, but yes, it's in our ordinance. I went through, I, I went through it. I spent a ridiculous unfair amount of money trying to build a new life. I tried to do everything right.
So your intention to build this track for fun and for the community?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
My name is Brett Tiltum, grassland dude. We rent the ground for them. So I'm the organic farmer if you'd like to talk to them. Brett and Tiltum. They create buffers for a reason. But you ever see a sprayer go across the field? Wonder what's in that? Not, not just what's coming out of a tire smoking dirt because it doesn't happen very often. And do I need a permit to run tractor for six hours in the backyard too? Like the thing, I mean, it's gonna be more than three days a week or three days a year. I'm hearing feedbacks, but I'm not gonna speak to their character. We all seen that. But that's just what I get to say. It's the whole, went after me with the farming.
So my name is Jolene Koots. I'm Jesse's wife. Um, I was just wondering with, um, that you had stayed for any concerns. Do you have any complaints outside of anybody here that came in? Did anybody show any other concerns or complaints with the proposed idea other than the people that stood today?
I don't believe so.
I can say no. Everybody that spoke for us, it has been forwarded not only to Jesse, but also to the rest of the board. So that way everybody was on the same page.
So, um, so I would say from what I'm hearing sitting there, everyone who has complaints are of course gonna be the immediate people surrounding the area, which would make sense. They're not happy because it's changed. Nobody likes the change. And it's one of those, they don't want it in their backyard. But here in the town of Pavilion, you haven't heard anybody voice any complaint from Buckman Road or, um, any road, any other road. It's just Route 19, also Lake Road and, um, Prairie Road Junction Road. So it's only surrounding the property that seems to have the concern. We do the hardcore happening. It's a different event. Um, it is at our home. We would not let it go on and for the amount of people and have it go and not have it go well. It is run so efficiently. I'm part of it. I'm happy to be part of it. All of our friends, there's not a blah. There, I, I could go on and on, but it's pointless, um, because everybody's touched base on this. It is clean. We don't have any problems. Any issues are immediately taken care of. Um, there is absolutely no reason why there should be any concern. And I think, um, I think a lot of people have their own opinions, what they think is gonna happen. Um, they're speculating and, um, have a lot of subjective issues. Um, we are approved already from, I want to reiterate, we're already approved by the Tennessee County Planning Board. And they also say there's no significant impact in what we're planning. So again, the hardcore happening, it's taken 15 years to get to the point where it's at. Katie also had said her, um, business, it's 11 years in running. They get maybe a thousand people. Things don't happen so quickly overnight, especially first year, especially your permit is for one year and then review. We haven't done anything. We're looking to do it to make improvements and have growth in our community. So with that, thank you for your service. Thank you for everybody who spoke on our behalf.
Will you just bear with me quickly? I'm gonna ask the Zoom online participants if they would like to speak. I know it's a little weird, but I'm trying to give everybody their, their shot here. Seven or eight. Uh, anyone on the Zoom chat? One more second here. Would anyone on the Zoom chat like to address the board?
This is Haley McIntyre. I would.
Okay. Will you give me one moment, please, to get a?
All right. I am a neighbor of Jesse's. I live two houses down from him. He does have that big event. And let me tell you, the trees are buffering. So what was said earlier is incorrect. We hardly hear anything and we are very close. Let me tell you, I get up the next morning, there is no litter on my road in front of my house, in my yard. Anybody that attends that event is very respectful of the property. They don't just take it upon themselves to pull into my yard or my driveway. They're all very respectful. I've never had an issue. I've lived out here since 1986. And I can't speak more highly of them. So your concerns about drugs and booze, we've had more accidents out here and it, believe me, it wasn't from the hardcore happening. It was random people. Never once from his event. So that's all I'd like to say, but I just wanted to vouch that I've lived near him with a big event with 3,000 people and no issues here.
Okay. Thank you. Would anyone else on the Zoom chat like to address the board? If so, please unmute yourself. I will unmute everyone for just a moment. Would anyone else like to address the board on the Zoom chat?
Hi, I would.
Please go ahead.
Hi, this is Pat Fenwick and I live on Perry Road. And, um, I just have a quick question. Is this, is this, um, are there gonna be more, more meetings about this?
Uh, yes, there will be more meetings, but this is the public hearing. Uh, I can't speak to exactly what our restrictions are going to be at future meetings because of the pandemic. Right now, the governor has allowed for all meetings to be virtual, but we felt that in the, you know, interest of community support that we needed to do everything we could to do this in person. Future meetings may be virtual, but they will be posted on the website and they, they are still participatory. You can still come in on a Zoom or depending on what the executive orders say, we may do them in person. All meetings are public, but public hearings have a legal obligation to hear from the public. Is there anyone else?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I am going to take the microphone back to the planning board. All votes have to be public, yes, absolutely. There's a regularly scheduled meeting, the third Wednesday of June. Am I correct on that? So.
Thank you, everybody. You know, thank you all for coming and your time and the participation and the public committee is not.
You should take a vote to close the meeting.
Before you do, Jesse, I would just, on staff recommendation, I would get with Dave. And also, I'm sorry, I've named that runs the Speedway. Or, okay, I'm sorry. Or whatever it is. I'm sorry. But I would get with these individuals that have gone through this process. A lot of the questions that came up, they are inside the calls. But like Dave mentioned, there's boxes to check. And because of the amount of questions that came about because of this application, I strongly recommend going with Dave. So that way, he can go through that because never in section 612. But what that's gonna do is it kicks you to, and you wanna focus on section 80, which is gonna be your study plan review and your special use permit criteria. Those are the things that you wanna check one of those boxes because as a lot of people have mentioned, things such as traffic. We do have to finish the secret process, which the planning board will do. But those items do have to be taken care of and attended to. So get with them and I think they'll be able to walk you through a lot of things that you guys might not be.
Yeah, absolutely. No, it's very hard.
It's not something you've done before, so go with those individuals that have here for.
Any more advice? Anybody have any concerns, questions, advice?
Yeah, I'm just supportive of the studies. Like I've heard you say, I'm outside of 1,000 people from all residents. I heard a neighbor say, you're not outside of 1,000 people. That's the limit. Again, it's hard to go by something that's.
He also said we're looking at great stress.
Again, if we can get the studies, get the official mapping and all that kind of stuff. We have the real data, we should make a decision.
I wasn't aware there was a need. That's why I thought it was a good thing. Absolutely. I appreciate it. I'll give it a go, guys, for sure.
Okay, anyone else? Or some very close to the meeting?
I'll put it up.
Okay. Where to go through? You have to say.
He said, yeah.
Yes. 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 It is officially closed. Thank you, everybody.